Good morning to all, would you please join me in prayer. Father, we are humble before you today. We ask that you be with us. You bless us and guide us. Be with this board as it conducts the business of the people of Gulf County. Lord, be with our military. Be with our new administration. This country's got to get reunited and we've got to all get back to thinking on the positive side. Be with us, Lord, always. Last year long, we lost, I think it was a hundred and forty police officers in law enforcement. That's a hundred and forty. Be with our police officers. Be with our EMS people, our first responders, our firefighters and all. Lord, last of all, please bless this county and give us all of our many sins. We ask this in your son's precious name. Amen. Amen. Thank you. Commissioner Quinn, would you do the honors of the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning. Thank you for taking time to come out to the January twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen regular meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. If any of you in the audience would like to, we have a, at the end of the meeting, we have a public discussion. For anyone in the audience, if you would, I would ask for the sake of Mrs. Roberts over here, she is the official minute keeper for the board. We have a little speaking form to fill out and it goes to her. So I have two here, the people that wants to come before the board when it gets into the public discussion. If you would, there's a tablet laying right over here. You just simply your name and phone number because sometimes six months from now, we may be in a public records request and need to refer back and it sure makes life a lot easier on, on the clerk and the minute keeper over here. But after, having said that, again, welcome. We're looking forward to having a good meeting today. Uh, could be the business to take care of. And we'll begin with the consent agenda. Now, the consent agenda for those, and I'll briefly go into this, is it's where one vote passes all. Instead of having twenty-five votes, we have one vote and it's just what it says, it's a consent, this one vote approves everything in the consent agenda. So at this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or any concerns with the consent agenda? Alright, having none, let's go as usual to our staff. Does any staff members have any concerns or any questions with the consent agenda? Having none, we will now come to the board. Does any board member, any commissioner, have any concerns with the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Chair recognizes Commissioner Quinn.
I need to abstain from the PDRB application for Mr. Eric Langston. On page fifty, fifty-three.
On page fifty-three. Now, Mr. Attorney, will he need to fill out the Form Six?
Yes, sir.
Alright, and on it put Commissioner, you know, your reason behind it, alright, thank you for that. Alright. If none other.
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, Commissioner Whitfield, the Chair recognizes. Page two forty-five, I would like to pull. Page two forty-five. Let me, I went through this last night, I think I know. Give me just a moment, good people. Commissioner Whitfield, you can address that when it gets to board business. Alright, I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the leading, page two forty-five for the time being.
So move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rogers. Do I have, have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any other board discussion? Alright, Commissioner Whitfield, we will address two forty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good, okay. We will address two forty-five later. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, in this time, we're moving right along. Mr. Butler, go to you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. My first item today, this has been discussed by the board before, as a citizen's requests for a speed limit increase on thirty-eight, State Road Thirty-E, for similar values of State Road Thirty-E. And for, for your consideration, if what you may want to do with that, um, as a request, the speed limit go from forty-five to fifty-five. It is state road, it's not your road, it's state road. So if...
If I may, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Right here.
Don, I, I think, uh, we could, uh, approach DOT and just see what the, the highest allowable limit, uh, they would approve on that road, would be my recommendation.
Okay, we will send a letter to DOT.
Alright. Mr. Attorney, would, we need a motion on there, or can we just do that?
It could be a request of the administrator at this point, before you approve it.
Alright, let's go that. Mr. Butler, would you, uh, address the concerns of the commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next.
Uh, my next item, Thursday before last, Commissioner Rogers and I made a trip out to Spruce Avenue. It's a roadway in the Cretewood subdivision.
Off Overstreet.
On three to six.
Okay.
And, uh, and the county commissioner had, had given a limited maintenance agreement on that roadway before years passed. Last time, maybe a year or two ago, two or three years ago. But there's some problems, cause trying to keep the road passable for school bus and mail truck and EMS and fire truck and whatever needs to go in, a garbage truck. But, um, Commissioner and I talked and, and, and looking at the possibility of the board agreeing to, uh, LMA, Limited Maintenance Agreement on Spruce Avenue again, for the board's consideration.
Commissioner Rogers, that was in the district I represent, now it's in your district, and I did address it back and there's some issues there. Would you care to comment on it, or any recommendations, suggestions?
Like Mr. Butler said, we talked about it, uh, for the safety, people that, uh, you know, has to provide services down there, uh, we'll have to get the attorney to draw up the agreement and stuff like that, but, uh, be a limited cost county, so, uh, I would like to see us do that if possible.
Would you like to place that?
I'd like to make a motion for it, yes.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Rogers for a limited maintenance agreement on Spruce, which is off of three eighty-six, out in the Overstreet area. Do I hear a second?
I second it. I get, I second.
Alright, right over here. Commissioner Quinn has a second. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience have any concern before we vote? If not, is there any opposition to the commissioner's motion? If not, motion passed five and oh for a limited maintenance agreement. Mr. Cawthon, make notes of that and, uh, take care. Thank you, sir. Mr. Butler?
Ms. Chairman, next item is a recommendation from me to the board, to, for the board to have a workshop next week. There's three, three items I'd recommend be on that workshop agenda. One being the HCP, the Habitat Constellation Plan. We've been working on it for two or three years now. We're at the point we need to, need to take a vote on it. And let me say, on the HCP, it's, um, probably most of what's in that document, we don't like, but the alternative to, if we don't adopt it, then we got to deal with U.S. Fish and Wildlife and they will run the show. It, it's an opportunity for us to have some control over permitting for the mouse along the coastline, the mouse and the other endangered species. But on, on the, uh, on the agenda, HCP, the second item is Cobra. And the Cobra is, we're specifically dealing with Saint Joe Peninsula, um, and looking at what maybe we should do. We've been working on Cobra for years and we've been trying to go through the administrative route, dealing with the federal agencies, which we keep hitting the block wall. Um, we, we'd like to lay it out to the board, what the staff would like to do, to lay everything that we have in front of the board, let the board make a decision, what the next step may be, take a step or not take a step. But I think we do it good, about an hour's time. Each one of these may take an hour, all these three, three, but if we can, hopefully it won't, but if we, we'd like to be able to lay it out to you, to make determination which way to go with it. But the third item is going to be Restore.
Okay.
There's a lot on Restore and, um, and Mr. Yeager have a lot to, to, to lay out in front of the board, but from what, what our plans is on Restore, what the board's plans is, um, what we'd like to see do, you know, is land acquisition, you know, along the coastline, along the riverine system, wherever. But we'd like to be able to talk Restore during that same workshop. If the board could agree, if the chairman can set a workshop, when everybody, we can coordinate with everyone, make sure everybody's going to be in town. Ideal would be everybody here. Ideal would be all five board members could participate in this workshop. So, my recommendation is we have a workshop to do HCP, Cobra and Restore at.
Alright, and you would like that sometime next week?
Ideal would be next week.
I'm available, gentlemen, the ones that work, any of you that have any, uh, any dates, have you picked a date? Let's give, let's go there, then we can work from there.
Wednesday would work good.
Wednesday, what day is that? Wednes, I mean, what, the date of it, is it, uh?
I'm looking at my calendar and I'm clear on Wednesday, that's why it's good.
Okay.
But we just need to find out if it's clear with you.
This is next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
What's the first date?
The first, is it the first?
Second.
I, I'll be out of town.
It's the first, okay, we got a conflict right here.
I'll be out of town first.
And this involves a lot in his district right here.
Thursday, next week?
Thursday be fine, yeah.
What about you, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Quinn, Commissioner Whitfield?
Yes, I'm fine.
I can work with you.
I'm good, I'm good, all. Thursday, the, come here, date?
Second.
The second, alright, good enough, just for the record, everybody. Now, uh, what time you want it?
It'd be good, we'd do it nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, Thursday, February the second. Now, uh, Mr. Attorney, stop me if I'm wrong. Ladies and gentlemen, a workshop, there's no motions, no votes. All the votes has to come here in an open, public meeting. So this is just to try to sift through and get down to the, you know, the bare facts on all of it. So I just want you to know that, there won't be any motions, no votes. Votes take place right here. Alright. We're good for next Thursday.
My last item, and I think Leanna may, maybe has this, it should do with Scrap, Scop, CIGP, Trip, App, the five acronym for, for...
Yeah, didn't everybody know what they stand for?
But what we're doing, Leanna's going to explain it when she gets up, but we, we wanted to recycle those that didn't make it last year and year before last, but we got a couple new ones we want to add to the list.
Good deal.
For your consideration, but that's all I have.
Alright, now, will she come up, you want her now, or when she'll come later? Okay, we'll do it. Thank you, uh...
Mr. Chairman, I have parliamentary inquiry with the attorney.
Alright.
We had, I had asked for a limited maintenance agreement, and I just want to know if we want to take it up now, or we gonna wait and take it up as old business, since we've already taken one up? That would be up to...
I have it on my list.
Good decision.
Uh, Mr. Whitfield, I have it on my list.
Okay.
I was going to bring it up right now.
Okay.
If that's alright.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Butler, that concludes you for now. Alright, at this time, we move over to the morning judge. We move over to the attorney. Mr. Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. Uh, the first item on your agenda, you'll see, I had requested, uh, the medical marijuana regulations. If I can't address that, it's number nine on your agenda.
Alright, let's go to number nine, gentlemen, medical marijuana.
But it was obviously, um, a much talked about issue after Amendment Two passed in the fall. Uh, getting together for the first meeting this year, I wanted to make a request. I've had an opportunity to talk with each of you commissioners individually, um, and I wanted to present a request to you all. Uh, you're seeing throughout the state and you're probably reading in the, the news of what the various municipalities and counties are doing throughout the state while we wait on Tallahassee to come up with an implementation schedule and some type of bill. Um, in the meantime, what I'm requesting is not to put a moratorium on medical marijuana as that has been legalized through the state of Florida. What we're concerned about is dispensaries, and that's part of the implementation. Um, and I would ask the commissioners, unless you have any questions or any objection, to provide us a five-month moratorium on a dispensary, uh, for medical marijuana in Gulf County that'll give us the ability to see what the state does and our legislators. After we see what they have, we can come back and introduce an ordinance to you ideally in May, um, either incorporating the state law or putting a, a, a comprehensive ordinance in front of you all to consider without an implementation statute. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or, or otherwise we'd request that five-month moratorium.
Alright.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Macron?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience, any concerns? Having none, is there any opposition to the commissioner's motion? Not motion passed five and oh for the moratorium.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The second item is the Mexico Beach Artificial Reef Association. Um, I think probably for the last five or six years, they have submitted a Department of Business and Professional Regulations application to the state for a, uh, special permit and sales license, uh, for their MBRA event in August out in your Beacon Hill Veterans Park. Um, each year, uh, in January, like clockwork, they submit an application to the county. Um, I've reviewed the application. One of the requirements with the state is a, um, the jurisdiction for the zoning, sign off on your, allowing them to have the event there with this license. So I'd ask the commission on behalf of the MBRA that have submitted the application to you all to authorize the chairman to sign this, so they can submit it to the state. And by doing so, you're also acknowledging the date on which they're going to have the event out in Beacon Hill Park, Veterans Park on, uh, February twenty-four, I'm sorry, on August twenty-fifth. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Quinn?
I got a question on that.
Sure. Well, let's get a, a second, second.
I'll second it for discussion.
Alright, thank you, sir, thank you. You have the floor, Commissioner.
Um, construction's going to start out there. Is the construction going to be complete by that time it's supposed to be, but you shouldn't interfere with what they're going to have going on anyway? Is that correct?
The contractor has a hundred and twenty days and they started this week. They started grading this week, so it should be, they should be done a hundred and twenty days. It should be done around Memorial Day.
Very good.
Second stand, sir.
My second stands, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Any other further board discussion here? Anyone in the audience on this? Alright, if there's no opposition to Commissioner Quinn's motion, S. five and oh. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, sir. The third item I have, uh, is with regards to, uh, two fifty-three U-Banks Drive. Um, in discussing this with the Commissioner, um, Whitfield in District One, uh, over the past few weeks, um, there's an affected area along this, uh, U-Banks Drive where the county has done, uh, road grading and improvements on county road and county access. Um, there's an unimproved area that's adjacent to Honeyville Park along U-Banks Drive, um, that has a public access concerns for emergency response vehicles, uh, consistent with your past policy, um, when there's a request and you have these issues of access for our county emergency response. Um, there's been a request. I've discussed it with Commissioner Whitfield. I prepared a limited maintenance agreement, uh, consistent with your other ones for the private landowners for access to perform this limited maintenance, uh, for the access of these vehicles. But I have the aerial for Mark and Lee, as well as the LMA prepared, uh, for the, uh, Mr. Butler's signature with your authorizing vote, and I didn't know if the commissioner wanted to elaborate or offer any other thing else.
Alright, Commissioner Whitfield, it's in your district.
Well, there's not much to say. I think we brought it up last time, uh, there's medical needs in this family and it seems that this area was kept up by this county for maybe twenty years. Somewhere in changing of administrations, it got dropped. So, I didn't want to get into a big discussion over who owns what, cause I, I'm not sure that we know yet, but I do know that it needs to be done, so that's my request to this board. Just do it, I'm not even saying do it over and over, but do it one time, get it right, and if we have to address it again, we will.
Are, are we asking for a limited maintenance?
That's right. Strictly limited maintenance.
Uh, motion, I'll go along with you.
That's a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Macron. Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Anyone? Having none, any opposition? No opposition, the limited maintenance agreement passes five and oh. Mr. Attorney, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, another request I had, uh, asked of the administration, uh, for the agenda is number ten, which is Indian Bayou Road, um, abandonment. Um, the discussion had come up in the fall, um, we've been working with Deseret with regards to Indian Bayou Road, um, and I had asked to put that on so that we can continue the discussion. After our first meeting with the new commission, uh, we had an opportunity to sit and briefly talk with, uh, the representatives from Deseret, um, in exploring and reviewing the road as you've all instructed us to do. What we need to do is finalize the terms of what agreement will be structured between the private landowners and the county. Um, and in addition to that, there's about a ninety-day process that we have under the right-of-way abandonment policy that we adopted three years ago, where the county, on any road abandonment, which we've now followed, we did it about a year ago, you need to notice it in the paper, you need to conduct public hearings, um, you need to post actual physical signs on the edge of the property to let people know that the county's considering the abandonment of a right, a right-of-way road. Um, in that process, myself and the staff will work to notice it and have those public hearings. Um, running along that same path would be continuing that discussion with Deseret. There's also another landowner, which is Wimaco Timber, um, with their corporate representatives. The actual right-of-way runs through those two properties for that three-plus miles or so of unimproved, uh, road. And so what we would do is I would start the process for the right-of-way abandonment, which will be a requirement of you all, if it's a, in a condition that you all accept. Um, right now, as it stands, it would be the abandonment of that roadway along those two private pieces of property. Um, it would alleviate, obviously, the county's obligations to maintain it, and we've received from the private landowner, Deseret, um, the discussion of exchanging with us Willis Landing in some form or fashion in the meets and bounds of that property. Um, in terms of the legal, we will, we'll secure that and provide it to you all during a public hearing, and then you'll have a vote on it ultimately to accept those conditions of the exchange, which is abandoning the road and accepting Willis Landing. Um, and the other wrinkle to it is right now, I think you're about four years or five years into a twenty-five-year lease on Willis Landing that you had, uh, entered with Saint Joe Company before they sold that property to Deseret. So you have a lease on Willis Landing, this would then acquire it and we would record that deed, um, take it into county possession.
Good idea.
Alright, so it's open for discussion. I'm happy to answer any of the questions of the commission, but just to continue that dialogue so that we can go back to these private landowners and obviously work in that direction, I need to obviously, before I start putting public hearings and notices in the paper, need any questions or direction from the commission.
Alright, let me ask you this. You need a, a motion from this board for the administrator and attorney to proceed?
Yes, sir, and, and ideally what...
Then we can...
Yeah, and, and then what, what I would be doing between now and your next meeting is setting up a schedule for those right-of-way abandonment hearings. Also, it would be my goal that we would come back to you at the next meeting and give you the finalized terms on that exchange, and then you all can either accept, deny, what have you, but, um, you know, that, that would be something that we'd hopefully put in, in black and white and, and a term sheet in front of you all, and then we'd obviously move forward. So the first step would be obviously the notice, it's a couple hundred dollars, we have a public hearing, um, but then as we get down the pa, get down that line, you can do both those decisions, which is the exchange and the abandonment. Yes, sir.
This is just more or less officially start the...
It, it's, it's a multi-month process. Yes, sir.
There you go. Alright, gentlemen, uh, I'll entertain a motion if there's...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Um, I, I would like to address this issue. Uh, I've discussed the legal terms with the attorney. There's several things that go beyond what's legal. This is public opinion. We do not know what the deal on this road is going to be at this time. You go and throw an abandonment out there, the people's going to come hollering. They don't know what you trading for, how much you giving up, or how much you getting. And I, I feel that we creating a storm of people to come in here and raise voice to it, when we don't even know what the deal is. There does not have to be any hurry in this. If it takes a year to do it, so be it. I know it takes time for the attorney to do it. This can be taken care of after we've arrived that the deal, what the deal is going to be, and the people understand what the deal. I think it'll cut out a lot of confusion and a lot of anguish for this board, just by taking a deep breath, just work on through this process, and I think you give away your whole card. When they see you done going into abandonment, it to, to them, or to me as a businessman, you pretty well told me that you're going to trade with me. And for that reason, I just, I, I think I will be for the trade, but I don't think it would be wise to go there right now. So I move that we object to this other notice.
Got a motion?
Yes, sir, that's, that is a motion.
Do I hear a second to his, to Commissioner Whitfield's motion?
I second that with discussion.
Alright, second with discussion by Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you have the floor.
Mr. Attorney, so, I mean, you, you saying that if we, if we do motion to just move forward, I mean, there's no going to be, there's no, we're not going to swap land or anything right now. You just going to get the paperwork drawn up, tell us, let us know what the, what's, what the deal is going to be, and what we're going to receive and what, what we're going to give up, right?
I'm, I'm going to set the structure up, so you guys can have the dialogue in public as to moving forward on it, um, having those public hearings. Um, like I said, what the exchange is, um, you know, the, the, the right, the right-of-way is so many feet wide, and it's approximately, I think, three-point-two miles long, over two private pieces of property. Um, the Willis Landing is somewhere between three-point-one and three-point-four acres, so those are ballpark, those are facts, and these details will be provided to you during this public hearings, but this would not be a decision to make these exchanges, this is to start the process and, um, continue the dialogue. We still have to get, we have a preliminary acknowledgement and acceptance from Deseret, which is not formalized, it's not in writing, it's all been verbal communications. We still need to have Wimaco Timber come on board as well, so this would give us the ability to engage them and start the public hearing process, so you, the five of you can discuss it and weigh out your options.
Okay, okay.
If I can, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, just a moment. Commissioner Quinn, or you'll have the floor?
Yeah, go, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll just do, come right over here.
Mr. Attorney, I, I, I think it's a slam dunk, I, let's just tell the people, I mean, it's a, it's a road that we have going to nowhere that we ma, we maintain, and it's a burden to the county. And Willis Landing is trem, is tremendously used, you know, so just for everybody's knowledge, you know, it, that's where we're at.
Hey, Commissioner Quinn, second stand, or you want to withdraw your second on the motion to?
Yes, sir, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm going to pull my, my second.
Alright, thank you, sir. Motion fails for lack of a second. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir, um, the alternative to that is, and I will, uh, work towards your next meeting to provide you with, um, I, I guess a term sheet, if you will. Um, but in the, in the meantime, what we were looking to do is obviously get a calendar together. I'll sit with the administrator and ideally the chairman between now and your next meeting, um, come up with a schedule and pick some hearing dates, um, and work up the notices in the paper with your consent. Um, but we don't want to engage that and start, uh, spending those funds until we have authorization from you five.
From the board.
Yes, sir.
Mr. What else, sir?
If we can have a motion to that effect.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, we got the motion right here by Commissioner Quinn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Uh, any opposition?
Aye.
You, you oppose? Okay, motion passed. Order one. Now, back to the attorney.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, uh, the next item I have is just, uh, the annual review of our policies. I appreciate, um, the commission acknowledging your consent agenda, several of the ones that we put in there over the holiday break. In our continual review of the policies, uh, we've come up with a couple more. I'll probably present a few more to you at the next, uh, month's meeting. I appreciate each of you commissioners bringing some of those to our attention and discussing them with us as to your concerns. We noted some of them. We have adopted policies and since changed our schedules for the county commission in the last two years, um, most notably being our holiday. Going back and looking at the policy, um, and our precedent that we had set for the last twenty or so years of canceling our Christmas meetings, I noted in there that, um, it has been canceled the week of Christmas. But I would ask that the chairman and the commission consider authorizing the administrator for future to be compliant with the policy. It's for cancellation of that Christmas meeting unless you commissioners feel as though there's business to tend to, or the administrator brings it to you. The cancellation of the Christmas meeting calls for a cancellation motion or resolution. That's in your current policy and guidelines. So if the commission can provide that to us, it'll give Mr. Butler that ability going into the holiday season each year to cancel that without calling you back for a special meeting.
Right, gentlemen? Have a motion? First of all, do you- Normally around the Christmas holidays, your courthouse is closed. A lot of the, uh, uh, constitutional officers, uh, they're closed, and it's just been something that this board has done for twenty-five-plus years. Now, remember, if it's something important, we'll meet Christmas morning if it's necessary, but normally, it's not. So, uh, that's the whole thing. It's just simply to give Mr. Butler, now, any commissioner has anything, it's brought up, but if it's in agreement with I, I won't contact you, uh, but, uh, if you have anything, then Mr. Butler can call the chair and say, "Look, we have an imported issue." Otherwise, we just, the administrator will just-
It's just for the December meeting? Is that what we're?
Yeah. Which is always around Christmas, the Christmas meeting. I'll entertain a motion if we have one.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak on this subject. I was hoping to hold this until the regular board meetings.
All right. Do you, you had a-
Yeah, I was, I was-
All right, Commissioner Whitfield? You have the floor.
December meeting.
All right, December meeting, yes.
Is that what you?
Yes.
My comments are not directed at anybody or to be an instructions. I'm here to try to help bring good government to this county. This meeting, December meeting, the reason we've got a three-hundred-page agenda, it was illegally, what words you might use, kept from happening. Every commissioner on this board was deprived of the right to vote on this. This has to come up thirty days prior. You voted on. Nothing against the chairman, but the chairman done this on his own, without the consent of this commission. Now, I just say, well, it's a mistake, wasn't intentionally or whatever. But I was sent here by the people. Watch out for the people. And I'm not going to be a potted plant on this board. And to make a resolution or whatever a year early, I don't see why we can't follow normal procedure. Do it a month early, like we always have done. You, you can decide in November. You'll know what the dates are, and you can decide then. I'm opposed to these way-out-front decisions. There's too many things that can happen and create emergency meetings or special meetings. And all we gotta do in most cases is follow most of the procedures we have. We do have procedures that are outdated. Mr. Novak, I brought one to his attention, and he has corrected it. I knew it was just outdated, but it was still mishandled and done wrong. And even unless we assure the people that we're going to follow procedure, and we make a mistake, we going to bring it up, we going to clarify it, we going to do whatever we can to keep it from happening again, I think there's a, is a huge mistake in, uh, returning trust between the people and the board. For that reason, I would pose any change requirement to hold or to cancel a meeting. You know, reason for it. Taken care of already.
That it?
That's it, sir.
Uh, Mr. Whitfield, I'm going to, uh, challenge you. You're entitled to your opinions and everyone, but the December meeting was canceled at the eleventh hour. Mr. Butler, I want you to correct me. It was no oversight, nothing. Did you contact the other commissioners and ask them, did they have any business they needed to discuss? Or were they, uh, would they, or, or would they would consider, you know, canceling the Christmas meeting? Did you talk to Commissioner Quinn or any-
Yeah, well, Mr. Chairman, there's not a day that goes by that I don't talk to multiple commissioners.
I know that.
At the point in time, in the agenda time, which is one week prior to the meeting date, um, we take in what we have received. At that point in time, we had received zero-
Nothing.
Item for the agenda. And so, you know, did I call every commissioner that day and ask? I did not. But typically, I know days ahead of time if a commissioner has something coming up on the agenda. But there was not an agenda item. That's, that was what we had one week prior to, that was twenty-seventh. We asked, we asked off on the twenty-sixth.
Yep.
Which meaning in order to get the agenda ready, and, and that was Christmas season too, and a lot of people on, you know, vacation, including me. And, um, but no, we, we had nothing a week prior to the twenty-seventh with the agenda.
Did I not contact you on the last hour and say, "Is there anything of importance?"
Yes, sir. You did.
Your answer was, "No, we have nothing."
Chairman. Challenge me. I would like to read you just one paragraph from Gulf County Board Rules of Procedure and Policy. Item four, about middle ways down, "Regular meetings may be otherwise postponed or canceled by resolution, motion adopted at a regular or special meeting by majority of the commission members present." That is word and period. Uh, if we just wanna just flop around and see who gets called and who wants to talk or whatever, we don't wanna follow procedure, fine, I can play this game any way we need to. I'm just trying to go by the rules so the people restore trust in this board.
Well, Mr. Whitfield, being you've opened the door-
Yeah.
Uh, in the November meeting, when the three new commissioners came, including you, came on board, uh, you had an opening statement there where that, uh, Mr. Quinn and I, we accused us of discrimination. I can put it right up here if you'd like.
That's incorrect. I'd like to see where I accused you and Mr. Quinn of discrimination. That is outright on the thread.
You saw it as discrimination.
Oh, I did not.
Yes, you did. I can put it right here. Now, secondly, you plainly stated that you, that we are a group of the untrusted, and you want to be no part of it. I would like to know who this group of untrusted-
Need to visit through your visit, uh-
No, I'm asking you because you're the one that brought it up.
Oh, you're the one that's mistaken fact that I-
No, no.
And Mr. Quinn, put it up.
Yeah.
You want put it up. It's not there. I've not said anything. I did not mention you or Mr. Quinn.
Didn't say name, put the intention.
I said, sir, that I would not. I was one-hundred percent intolerant to discrimination. I said that nobody would ever be silent for lack of a second.
I apologize to the people, but this is just to clear up some misconceptions here. Where you at, Ms., uh, Lanier? Right over there. Maybe we can get back to our business. Give her just a moment, please.
Bad day when we have to get angry verbal and go after people because we disagree with what they bring before this board.
Put it five-fifty, five minutes and fifty seconds, somewhere right in there. Mr. Whitfield?
I have concerns, not particularly about Mr. McDaniel. I have concerns about a trend that we're setting, that we have just been through. This has never been the tradition of this board, and I think it got started off on the wrong foot. Um, as an outsider, I saw it as discrimination. I'm zero tolerance on discrimination. Having said that, I'll tell each member of this board, you will never be quieted for lack of a second. Mine will be coming your way. You can express yourself, or anybody agrees with you or not, and I'm not here to tear things down, tear it apart. But we need to be very, very careful. We got three brand-new people. This is a new board, an opportunity that you have. And I'd say I would, uh, I will go along with this, not because of the person, but because I just think it should be a tradition that no commissioner should serve consecutive terms as chairman. I think you deprive yourself a lot of leadership, new ideas, and things that the county, and also a person serving as chairman. And I'm just thinking, Mr. McDaniel, Mr. McDaniel would say you that. It is almost impossible for him to do that and do the job with his people. So I come here with no grudges, no axes to bear. I come here to try to make government better. That is my only desire, is to make it better. I know some have heard different, some have said different, but I tell you, give me a chance, work with me. The most important thing we got is not what's going on on the Cape, it's not what's going on at the parks, it's not what's going on anywhere. First and foremost, with this board, we have got to develop and regain the trust of the people. And if you think we got it now, you need to go with me for a day or two in my district. We're not trusted, and we just join the group of the untrusted. Now, people may like you as an individual. I hear good things about all of you. And I don't want to be part of a group that is constantly looked down on, talked down to, and talked about. And it's so easy to lose sight of the people we represent. I understand it. Oh, I'll owe for there on that particular issue, and thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitfield. Ladies and gentlemen, before we vote, let me-
Okay. Mr. Hammond?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll take, uh, the blame. Don was on vacation. We forgot at the last November meeting to cancel the meeting. To our knowledge, we hadn't had one in, in the twenty-five years I've been with the county. And the only way to have followed the policy, uh, to do it correctly would have been, been to have a special meeting the day before the Christmas holiday, to cancel the meeting the day after the Christmas holiday. So I told you, you had the authority to cancel the meeting. You did call. You talked, I know you talked to Don, but you talked to me. I apologize, I did not talk to Mr. Whitfield. I talked to Mr. McCrone, I talked to Mr. Rogers. I did not talk to, uh, Commissioner Quinn either, but there was nothing for the agenda. It had not been done in the twenty-five years I'd been with the county, and I gave you the advice that you had the, uh, the authority to cancel the meeting. Bad advice. I apologize for not contacting all the commissioners, but it seemed very foolish to have a special meeting just to cancel the regular meeting. So I will take the, the blame.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman. May I? One more, and we got the move. Okay. I would like to respond to Hammond's. I'm blaming nobody for this. This is not about blame or, or somebody getting punished. This is about following procedure. To say there was no other choice, we've had the same choice all the time. We have a month ahead of time, just like we've done for the meeting that we're going to move in February. And I, I feel it was very unfair. Now, I don't think you proved your point with the film just now, and to put me down because I wanna do the right thing. You're gonna have a difficult job, sir. I never mentioned you or Mr. Quinn as being discriminating. Mentioned I was a hundred percent intolerant to discrimination. I stand by that statement, and I stand by when we have this kind of discussion, and it goes to this point, because I ask it, we go by a procedure that we established. I think it's a sad day and old time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, um, it, in pre- just like I said, in review of the county policies, I, I think the goal of the commission, and you all correct me, is you wanna run as efficiently as you possibly can. Commissioner read section four, regular meetings. It reads, "All regular meetings shall be held in, uh, County Administration Building," and it talks about "may otherwise be postponed or canceled by resolution or motion adopted at a regular special meeting by majority of the commission members." If it's, if it's the, uh, direction of the commission to work as efficiently, it says by motion or resolution. I had asked for a motion. As an alternative, I wrote a resolution. I'll read it to you. It's three sentences. You have the opportunity to adopt it through resolution, uh, affording this efficient, uh, administration. And then I'll be happy to answer your questions, but it's a resolution of Board of County Commissioners, and it's an, and it's an addendum to section four of your current policy. It says, "Whereas Gulf County Board of County Commissioners, following a thorough review of the board's procedures and policies, seeks compliance and efficiency with the current policy for meeting cancellations and postponements. Whereas Gulf County, uh, Commissioners seek to authorize the administrator and chairman to cancel or reschedule a regular commission meeting, following a review of a proposed business agenda in the absence of any required voting actions of the commission, or the regular meeting falls within two days of a national holiday. Therefore, it be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners as follows. The Board of County Commissioners finds the above recitals to be true and correct, and incorporated herein, that the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners instructs and authorizes the county administrator and the county commission chairman to thoroughly review and examine any and all proposed regular meeting agendas, for the absence of required voting actions of the commission, and any upcoming annual calendars for conflicts with meeting dates, including conferences. The Gulf County Board of County Commissioners authorize the county administration, with the consent of the county commission chairman, to cancel or reschedule regular meetings in the absence of any required voting actions or national holidays that fall within two days of a regular meeting date." Uh, it's presented to you for today, January twenty-four, two thousand seventeen, uh, and it's up for your consideration, sir.
Sir, may I respond? Chairman?
Recognize it.
I appreciate what the work that the, uh, attorney has done on this. I see it totally unnecessary. It's already addressed. It's here. We don't have to do anything but go by the rules. And I would certainly oppose giving my vote over the two people. I was put here to check in.
I was put here to check in, lay in on issues. We have plenty of time, a month before that meeting, to discuss, we all, Christmas is always on the twenty-fifth, and will be. There's no reason for this board not to be able to know what they're gonna do in the first part of December, or the last part, or, or whenever, we, we should know that. It's not just wait and see what's happening, and then we'll decide. If we can't decide in November meeting, I was off moving, I enjoyed the time off, okay? It's not that I'm far or against it. It's that I'm against just switching in rules, and then when one is broken or not done, we make some new rules to cover that. And to, to just kind of whitewash out what I had to weigh, and we'll stick a new one out here, and, and three of, four of us won't be allowed to vote on it. I'm, I'm totally opposed to this, so that's up to you, gentlemen, that's why you're here.
If I can, Mr. Chairman. Let, let's...
Commissioner Whitfield, you...
I'm through, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion, let's table it, let's move on. This is, this is ridiculous.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion to table, second to, second by Commissioner Rogers, any further board discussion? Not any opposition? Motion pass five on the table, let's move along, Commissioner...
That's it, sir.
I mean, uh, Attorney, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hammond?
The only thing I have to say...
Let's move, uh, as quickly as possible, we're digging into people, Simon.
Yes, sir, the, uh, number eleven, the road bond change order, it is the twenty fifteen sixteen road bond change order number one. I'd call it a cleanup change order, and it's in the net amount of an increase of forty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Recommend approval.
Uh, uh, yes. What roads is on?
This, this is the cleanup change order, this is everything that was on the original...
All of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner McCrone?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition? Motion pass five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before we move on...
Please.
Uh, we've gone over the numbers on the road bond, there's some money, a little bit of money left over.
There you go.
And, uh, we started out, or the previous board started out to, uh, clean up, you know, the unpaved roads, and I've got two out at the Cape that would, if we could get those done, it would pretty well eliminate the, the greater going to the Cape, uh, which is Sandalwood and Robinwood. And I'll make a motion, uh, to that effect, let's, let's put those roads on the list, take care of that.
Motion by Commissioner McCrone? I'll second. Second by Commissioner Rogers.
Driftwood, I'm sorry, driftwood.
Driftwood. Driftwood, and what's the other one now?
Robinwood, driftwood and robinwood.
Driftwood and robinwood, that's good, all right, we have a second, any further...
Mr. Chairman, Leanna has a question.
We're moving too fast, are you there?
I'm sorry, I got, yes, driftwood and robinwood.
Okay, let's, have you got it corrected now? All right, sir, uh, got a motion, a second, any board discussion?
No, no, I'm fine with it.
No, anyone in the audience, any objection to these two roads? We've got a, we've got a little touch of money, and we want to utilize it there. All right, no opposition, motion pass five and oh.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I've got a question.
Okay, sure.
Uh, there's gonna be a little bit of road bond money left. My district unfortunately was on the short end of that, most of you commissioners know that, uh, got a little over a hundred thousand, and most everybody else got quite a bit more. Um, I would, with the board's approval, I would like the money that's left over to go to my district. I've got a couple of roads, we talked about one that, uh, we're gonna do some maintenance on. Uh, I've got a couple of other ones that need some work done, and if y'all approve, I would like to have that leftover money.
Got a motion. Uh, make a motion. Thank you, sir.
Second.
Second right over here. On any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience?
Uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to, uh, ask Mr. Butler, on the Willis Landing, we've got money set aside, we, we don't have it in our possession. Would it be beneficial to pull that money back at this time and, and go for a, uh, you know, we got some grants through the, the state that we can do that with, uh?
I, I think there'd be different ways to handle it. One is, we in the process possibly of, of receiving that piece of land. We, we operating on about a quarter acre now, and we may wind up with two or three acres of that land. You may want to re, uh, redesign where that road goes in and out, so I would, well, one way would be to pause the use of that money, maybe set it aside and use it, once you do know what piece of land you have. Um, it'd be a board decision whether or not to pull that money back out, but you could delay it aside and use it when, when you know what the shape of land you have, how much land you ask for help. But, or, um, yeah, I guess only the other thing would be, one, leave it like it is, one would set it aside and use it later, and once you know how big a piece of land you get, or liquidate that money and do something else with it, but... So it's, it's in, it's in the bond, it's in, it's already in the calculations, it's already there to be paved. But if you, uh, one thing, since you may be getting a bigger piece of land, you may want to, um, put the road in a little different way, it is, it may be a bigger circle, uh, through, or it may not. It might be something you want to look at, but it wouldn't hurt probably to set it aside for right now and do it, do it later.
Okay. Whatever the commissioner wants to do on that, I just throw that out to...
Well, Commissioner Whitfield is just... I would just to set it aside till we see what, I think, get a little agreement to it right now. Okay.
Hold up, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, we got the motion on there for Mr. Rogers, before we get to this. Uh, any other questions with, uh, motion by Commissioner Rogers for the money to go into the District Three? Anyone in the audience? Not any opposition? Motion for their pass five and oh, now let's address the, uh, Willis Landing. Want to leave the money, or you want to, let's pull it back for the time being, what do we want to do there?
So we make, we need to make a motion to pull, to pull the money back, to hold it until...
All right, you're gonna make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Pull the money back, to hold it until we decide if we're gonna, if we're gonna get that property or not.
Second by Commissioner Whitfield, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? If none, motion, no opposition, motion pass five and oh. All right.
One, one last cleanup in District Four, do, we want to talk about that?
District Four, okay, Commissioner Quinn's District, okay?
Lee has got the...
Come on, Lee.
Good morning. Uh, there's one road in District Four, it's Avenue D, that's on the actual paving list. Uh, I'd spoke with Clay Smallwood, and the city, they have got some problems under that road. And what we want to do, my recommendation would be to take that money and freeze it to him until they either get theirs done, or he can move it somewhere else, 'cause last thing we want to do is go pave that road, and then they cut it all up.
Cut it in two, we don't, we don't want to go that way.
But it's, it's already in the, the paving list, so that's my recommendation.
Do we need a motion?
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCrone?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition? Motion pass five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sumner?
Yes, sir, I have one thing. I have an easement, uh, it's for Duke Energy, for Beacon Hill Park, uh, to allow them to come in and move power lines, so the contractor can start construction. Just need approval of the, of the easement.
I just need a motion for this easement, they've got to set some power pole, or poles or a pole, I'm not sure.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Quinn?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any other board discussion on this easement for Duke Energy? Anyone in the audience, any opposition? Opposition, board motion pass five and oh. The summer.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, come on around, Mr. Uh...
Lowry.
Lowry, that's him, yeah.
Thank you.
That's him.
I don't have anything right in the back.
Commissioner, City Commissioner, okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mark?
Yep.
Please.
Back on the road bond again, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, that's good.
I'll give you just a quick update, so you...
Please do.
I won't give you road names and all, but new construction list, we had twenty on the list, ten are in progress or completed, that's ten remaining. On, on the resurface list, there was twenty-one, in progress is thirteen are completed, and remaining eight. And then on the road patches, where we had went around and replaced, uh, deficient cover pipes under roads, where we actually cut the road at, at Public Works, there was twelve of those on the list, and they've all been completed. There's, there's some, if you see some in your area still, they're connected with some other road paving, they're gonna catch while they pave a road or something like that.
Sure.
But, but what we have, just so quick and dirty where we at on that. The other thing, yesterday I received a phone call from Jackie Husband on the Jared Daniels Road. He's with us today, if you want to hear from him. But essentially what we got on that road, they're a hundred percent through with their pavement. Uh, DOT funded that project, and DOT had recommended that we, uh, that we leave it closed for thirty days after the, the paving had ended. It's gonna put a little bit of a bind on traffic through there, but the overall good that it's gonna do, it's my recommendation that I go with FDOT's recommendation and with engineer, we're all in agreement, the road needs to be closed for thirty days. That'll give an open date for around February the tenth.
February, all right, let me, let me, that's been in the district, I've worked for six years to get this dream. Now, when you say close the road, is that to light traffic, like a car, and a pickup truck? Or is that to everything? Uh, my big concern is, uh, these big log trucks, we just, we were fortunate people that the taxpayers of Gulf County, the state, by going to these meetings, as I said in the prior meeting, and lobbying for this county, we got them to do a county road, nearly eight miles, seven point, I think, six, four, anyway. I'd hate, for the, for the money, and we had to go back and get another hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars because of some, a wet issue out there, but I would hate to see all this length of time and the money, and then two weeks later, our roads starts getting, receiving damage from heavy loads. It needs, what the gentleman's saying, it, it needs to cure. It needs to cure. Now, my question was to you, all traffic are just, it limited to the use of, say, a car and pickup trucks? Keep the log trucks off?
Right, we've had conversations...
Tell me, tell me now, what, what's, or Mr. Husband, either one, what's the deal on it?
And Jack, you can come up if you'd like. We, I had conversation with Jackie and with Clay.
All right, he, he's been the, uh, engineer over, or the inspector on this road.
Yes, sir.
We don't want to damage something, this too.
I mean, ob, obviously, the local traffic is fine, it's, the rest, every, that's not, is a usable road, there's no signage on there yet.
That's true.
At, after today, there should be some signs, there's no traffic markings, there's no traffic paint, there's no signage. It's too dangerous, in addition to the life and the longevity of the pavement, um, it's too dangerous of a road to not have strapping and signage on there to let the public through. So the signage and strapping should be done within the next week.
Well, it's, it's got, it's cured for that.
And it, that'll just give it more, more time to cure as well, so we're at the week and a half to two-week point right, right now. February the tenth, it will be all okay, but we will have gone by the DOT recommendation of the bituminous engineer at District Three DOT, and everybody that has, has a part of the project as well. It, it'd be my...
So getting back to the question, is it your recommendation, now this, it's not my decision, it's a board decision, your recommendation that we keep this road closed and reopen in, what, say, the tenth of February, what was that day?
So it's my recommendation to the board...
All right, give me your recommendation.
Chairman to the board, would be to, to close the road to all traffic until the tenth of February, for the reasons that Jackie said.
Now, I know there's people live right there, but we can't block them off.
That's right, that's right.
Good, okay.
There's not a feasible way to say that it's gonna be open to some and not open to some. People leave barricades, they'll, they'll move a barricade, they'll drive through, they'll leave it open, and the next thing you have is a log truck coming down, and we've had problems with them moving the barrel barricades out of the way, and it's kind of like going through a gate on a farm. You don't mind opening the gate up to get through it, but it's hard to get back out of the truck and come back and close that gate sometimes. They don't get back out of the car or truck and put the barricade back, so everybody else starts using it.
The body's open, all right, all right.
We, we've waited such a long time to have this completed, I would like to present the best potential...
Yeah, I want a good road, I want something to last for a while, there. All right, uh, gentlemen, you've heard the, uh, Mr. Cawthorn here on this closing this road. I, I'll entertain a motion that we close the Jared Daniels Road, except to the people that live there. So, and reopen on February the tenth. So moved. Thank you. Got a motion by Commissioner Rogers, need a second? Second.
I second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience, any concerns, anyone happening to live there? All right, if none, any opposition? Motion pass five and oh, now, uh, Mr. Cawthorn? If you have to take our flashing signs or whatever there, but I, I, I'm out, I was out there when that Sunday, when all that bad weather went through, just looking and seeing, I've traveled the road Saturday to Saturday before, and it, it, it looks good, but we just, we can't, we just can't destroy this, because what'll happen? DOT will come back and say, let your taxpayers fix it. We don't want that. Archer?
Thank you, Mr. Husband. Chairman, while Mark's up here, let's handle one more, uh, thing, uh...
All right.
We had a lot of debris from the storm on the south end.
I know you did, I know you did.
We want to do a one-time pickup, uh, of all the debris, uh, sometime next week, whatever, Mark and them Deans is... Uh, Jennifer, if you want to get with them, and if we can, I, I'm sure I need a motion, and I'll make that motion to do that. Uh, just a one-time pickup on the debris, uh...
I have a second to the commissioners.
I have, I second that, sir.
Second by Commissioner Whitfield, any other board discussion? Mr. Chairman, good, I'd say something along this line, we had some pretty bad weather in Howard's Creek yesterday. We had trees down, power lines, the whole nine yards, and I'd like to do a shout-out for Mark and for Chris Wood. In a matter of five minutes, we had people roving, and so, uh, I think that, I can't say enough good about what I've seen in working with these people. And so I think sometime, they may not get all the credit they deserve, but I just want to note our thank you. All right, we're on that subject, uh, I want to thank the fire departments in this county, they were out. Epping, Clear Rideaways, working with the power company, I know up in, I live in the north end of the county with Gulf Coast Electric, uh, we had about three fire departments out, and I don't know how many they had down here. I know South Gov, Saint Joe, the city of Saint Joe, there could be highly commended for their services and, and all, but anyway. Motion is for us to do it one time, you understand? Any further board discussion on this? Any?
It's just gonna handle just District Five, that's what we're talking about?
Do you want to do the whole county, you want to modify it to the whole?
Whatever, y'all.
I think we didn't, why don't we just do that? Yes, I had the goodness and the gracious, I know we have a little bit of tiff fee, would you like to modify your? You didn't limit it just to District Five. Do it one time after this win. Is that agreeable with everybody? Is that agreeable, I know you have, so... All right, any, want any audience? Any opposition? Motion pass five and oh, thank you, Mark, thank you. Have anything else, sir? All right, uh, Scott?
Actually, yeah, Lee's got it, sir.
I, I, yeah, and I got another one back here, come on, Mark, we trying to get moving along here.
Uh, on the, the road bond?
Okay.
There was a road that Commissioner Quinn had inquired about on Eighth Street.
Eighth? Okay, right over here.
In town. And we didn't put a number by it, uh, we originally put a, a, just a recap number, but I'd spoken with the engineer, and that has to be all dug up, just like we did Sixteenth Street, and it would be way too expensive for that, so my recommendation, we'll just leave it off, and then see if we can't get some kind of grant to go in there and fix that correctly.
Okay.
But that was on the list, it just hadn't, wasn't approved.
Mr. Chairman, we did look at, I looked at several roads in the city, I would, was gonna, just not enough money there to even attempt to, to try that, so, that's...
Yeah, yeah, and I spoke with Lee, and like I said, and, uh, I'm on board with, you know, saying, just put, just go ahead on and take it off, and then hopefully we can get us a grant to redo that, to redo that whole road, so...
We'll put the seconds to work on that today.
So we need, we need a motion to pull that road off?
Just direction, 'cause it was never been...
Okay, okay.
Never been asked.
Okay, all right, thank you, Lee, anything else? Uh, Mr. Yeager, come on, sir, and before I get over on this side of town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, good morning to you.
I know y'all are busy today, so I'll be as brief as I possibly can, but I do have a handout for y'all.
All right. Multi-year, okay.
Uh, late last year, y'all had approved your multi-year implementation plan. Uh, we had sent that in to, to the U.S. Treasury... late last year, y'all had a, approved your multi-year implementation plan, uh, we had sent that in to, to the US Treasury who has to approve that plan. Uh, there was back and forth with some requests for additional information, and basically, there's some technical things that they wanted us to add into that plan. Uh, we've done that, we've, we've sent a draft of that back up to, uh, to Treasury to review before I come back to you again, so maybe we won't have to come back a third time. Uh, they've kind of approved this initial draft, so all I need from y'all today is to kind of renew that, uh, uh, approval of the multi-year implementation plan with, with the, uh, amendments and changes that we worked with Treasury, uh, to get right. So, it looks like we're getting very close to getting this plan approved, and I would hope that within the next thirty days, we'll have it approved and, and all that money set in place even prior before the project's ready to, to go to, go to construction, so all I need is a motion of the board to approve this plan. I'll get the go, and, and approval for the chairman to sign a letter, uh, with that, and we'll, we'll go from there, we'll move this thing forward.
Good deal, all right, gentlemen, you've heard for a multi-year plan. I made a motion to approve the plan. By Commissioner Whitfield. Second. Second by Commissioner Rogers here, any further board discussion? All right, Mr. Yeager, we appreciate all you've done, I've been.
Thank you.
Right along beside you on this, and, uh, anyone in the audience? Rogers, right here. Anyone in the audience? Any opposition? Motion pass five oh.
Thank you, board, and thank you, sir. And we'll put that on the website, so the public can see the renewed, it's, there's very little difference, they probably won't be, be able to see the difference, but it'll be on the website.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, over here. Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Commissioners. Uh, this is just a little bit of good news, uh, the Commissioner and I have the, the pleasure of sitting on the, uh, disadvantaged transportation board for Gulf County. And out of the, I believe it's nine counties.
Nine counties, that's correct.
Uh, our transportation coordinator, Ms. Kathy Valentine, was awarded Coordinator of the Year this year for what she's done in Gulf and Franklin County with the things that they've done providing transportation to the disadvantaged. And it's a pleasure for myself and the chairman to sit on that board and to see something good come from it. Gulf County being number one out of the nine counties, I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, that's great for this county.
Mr. Whitfield? All right, boys, we're gonna start hunting up paper here.
Just a quick.
Yeah, this one, okay.
Just a quick update on our collections.
Sure.
Well, this is collections from actual amnest runs, uh, first quarter of this fiscal year, two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-three, uh, which is up twenty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy from this time last year.
Good.
So, we're looking pretty good so far.
All right, give me the bad news now.
That was it.
There you go.
We just went online with our new radio system this weekend. Uh, we have going right now is the portables, but we're still ninety percent improved from what we was. They're putting in our mobiles today. So, that should make us cover the whole county and talk from Panama.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Whitfield, for what you do. Adams, okay. Can't believe, Ms. Lanier?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just one thing, um, you have in front of you, um.
What does it look like?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Um, just a quick update for, um, for the public and for the board, we have, um, finally gotten all of the bugs worked out of our live streaming, so anyone from the public that is not able to make it to a meeting, if you want to, uh, view the meeting as it's happening, there's only a two or three minute lag, I think, um, in, in the actual meeting itself. Um, what you can do is to go to our county website, which is www.gulfcounty-fl.gov. Um, and the live streaming announcement is in the upright, upper right-hand corner of the homepage. Click on the word here, and, uh, once the streaming, uh, it, it takes you to Gulf County's YouTube page, which is where we stream from. And once the streaming has begun, uh, it indicates that is the current meeting. Um, and if you mark the picture live, your video starts to record. Um, even if you start viewing the meeting after it's begun, it will give you the meeting from the beginning, or you can fast forward to wherever you're at during the live stream and, and actually get it live, so that's something we've been trying to figure out how to do in a cost-effective manner for many, many years, and, um, and, uh, Dennis Barfield, our IT director, has done a fabulous job to get that at, um, no cost uh, to the citizens for that viewing.
That's great. What we can do, people, if you want to, we love for you to come here, but if you wanna sit home and drink your coffee, you can watch what's taking place right now, or you can, within an hour, it'll be on there, you can go back a year from now, if you wanna look at a meeting a year ago, anything, so this is, this is updating us good. Thank you, Ms. Lanier, anything else?
That's all, sir.
That's all right, Ms. Herring, you have anything this morning? Thank you. Ms. Rhonda? All right? Little lady? Okay, we'll close out, let me go, all right, Mr. Butler, then we'll go to the chair.
Deanna's got something with DOT.
Oh, yeah, I'm. Come on, come on. Thank you, Dawn, for reminding me.
I have two items.
Thank you. Here we go. Twenty-eighteen.
The handout I just gave all of you is, uh, the FDOT, um, SCAP Scrap CIGP tap trip applications are now open. Uh, the, these are the projects that we would like to apply for. Um, both of these SCAP projects, um, are recycled projects that we, uh, we recycled from last year, we've already applied for them, didn't get them last year, so we'd like to apply for them again. Um, also, the tap and the trip projects are recycled from last year. The new projects are the scrap applications, Stone Mill Creek Road and Pleasant Rest Road, and the CGIP, or CIGP, uh, County Road Twenty-two application. So, I'd like you to, um, recognize those projects today.
You want us to give a motion on that? All right. Entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Quinn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers, any further board discussion? The audience, the opposition? Motion pass five and oh.
The second item I have for you is the deducted change order for the stump pole project, which you have, um, you've already approved the agreement and your consent agenda today. Uh, this is just deducting the agreement to, um, with the amount of six-hundred-sixty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-five and ninety cents. Um, the project has already been awarded to C, IC contractors.
Uh huh.
So, we would just need to approve this deducted change order to start construction.
All right. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner McCrone. And your, I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Nothing, none? Opposition? Motion pass five and oh.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, don't run off, Mr. Lowry. All right, sir, thank you. Uh, Sheriff?
No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thank you and your officers for all you done during the, the weather time, I saw the officers out, they were very visible, thank you, sir. All right, ladies and gentlemen? It's ten-twenty, we'll try to move along here as fast as possible, that concludes the county staff business. Now, we will move into board business, that's the business between the board here. Uh, Commissioner Whitfield, you pull page, uh, we'll start over, we'll go from left to right, page two-forty-five, so. Commissioners, if you want to, yes, slip into page two-forty-five, uh.
I'd like to pass these out to the, two-forty-five. Pass these on down, there's a couple of sheets with it, but the two-forty-five is part of.
You found? All right, here, 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 gentlemen.
Let's go, one, two-forty-five, oh.
All right, here we go.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Whitfield? You have the floor at this time?
I, uh, realize after last little exchange.
Hold on, wait a minute.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I ask Mr. Whitfield to please give the clerk one of those copies, please, for the record? Thank you, sir.
Page two-forty-five. Mr. Whitfield, you have the floor.
Okay. Uh, with the first exchange we had there, I'm going to have to, uh, work backwards, look like. I'll go ahead, I'll start with, I'll start with page one and work through to give some background to this. If you'll notice, it's a, it's a preauthorization for travel, or some twelve trips at there, and, uh, my concern with this, it's not that I'm far or against the travel. My problem that I have with it, this was done by prior boards. Eight full members on this board, it was not even here, I'm not sure about the fifth, might not have been here either. And this was decided this way and preauthorized ahead of time. Now, no word I know in business or anything I've ever involved in that you would do it this way. It would, uh, so, what I would like to see is the decision of these trips come before this commission each time for discussion. And some answers as to what they are. Way it is, it's just an open, open-ended, uh, in other words, we don't know who's going, we don't know where they going, we don't know what it's gonna cost, we don't know how long it's gonna be. We don't have any of that information. And, uh, general attending conference preauthorized, we did not preauthorize it. Now, I know the only person that likes change is a wet baby. But, this is a, needs to be put back to where the commission makes these decisions on a one-on-one. I'm not far or against, I'm, I'm, I'm about policy and about clarity and transparency. And you, we just went through this deal on page two, where a meeting was completely cancelled. Now, we over here on page three, which is okay, that was done intentionally this way, but it was done right. It's on the page two-forty-five. And, uh, it's for moving the meeting from February twenty-first to twenty-seventeen. And, and, uh, it, I found out yesterday, I had an ankle in, but nobody has told me. I, I had a meeting yesterday to even find out what this was really for. And, uh, prior over there, there's, uh, several commissioners and staff, you know, it, that's what it's about. Uh, this does not tell me where you going. It's not giving me any information, this would never fly anywhere within this kind of. And all I ask is that those decisions come back to where they should. That's before this board, this is a new board, I'm not saying that I'm against the one of them, I may wanna go on all of them, I don't know. I think these decisions should definitely come before this board on a one-on-one basis, and they need to be some questions answered. Who's going? Where are we going? They may all be good, what's it going to cost? What do we expect the gain? What's the cost-benefit analysis of it? We, you know, I, I, I don't have any of that, and this, uh, sheet three has brought this to my attention. And, you know, if we just agreed to it, it's on business as usual, and it may be if that's what this board wants. I choose to have a say in it. And so, I would, uh, uh, if we need a motion, I would like to make a motion that each one of these trips come before this board. Be approved or disapproved, we're talking a lot here when you're talking twelve trips, I don't know how much money, and I doubt anybody here does. And they may be a lot accomplished, it may be great. I doubt it's all great. I doubt it's all necessary, but it, I'm not talking about my personal opinion, I'm talking about policy that is done right. You would go nowhere and lay that on your boss's desk, and you'd get it approved, no CEO, CEO in the country would approve it. Without the information to go with it, and maybe the people have it, but I sat here today, I don't know the commissioners, you'll have to tell yourself, have you planned on going, have you been notified, do you know what it's about? That's fine. But I can tell you this one commissioner, it no until yesterday. And to say that they several commissioners and staff going to this, it, it's premature, it's presumptuous. And, uh, we, we got to work toward dealing with these sort of things, it don't matter how many roads we pave, if we don't deal with these sort of things, it's none gonna matter in the end. We'll just be another picture on that wall, but, uh, if they take pictures anymore, and I want this to be the best board it's ever set. And I believe it can, we got some good people on it, just gotta decide how we're gonna do it. I, I rest there with that, uh, uh, person, guess after the way their partner mine and the people they represent, I'd be fine with whatever the decision is.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Quinn.
Uh, the first question I have is, um, I have is, uh, we do have a budget, uh, for each commission that's approved for travel, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, uh, Commissioner Whitfield, I, I don't attend all these meetings, but I, I do go to a, a, a couple. Um, and when I do go to those meetings, I'm not going there on vacation, I'm not going there to waste taxpayers' dollars. I'm going there to either make me a better commissioner, or to make contacts with people who can help me in my community, or who can help me in my, in my county. I'm not just going there to lay in the bed, to eat, to waste taxpayers' money, I'm going there to try to get some information to help make me a better, a better leader for my, for my community, for my, for my district. And so, I, I, I'm assuming that these, cause I always look at the budget, and I'm assuming that this travel thing is, has already been passed from the get-go, I think it'll be a waste of time, if I got to come up there every time and tell you why I'm going to this meeting, explaining to you what I'm, I don't know where I'm gonna get out of the meeting until I get there. I might make a good contact with somebody at the White House, that might can come back later on and help us out. We go to these meetings because we make good contacts with people that gonna, that can help Gulf County, that can help put dollars back in Gulf County, and if you don't go to these meetings, if you don't show up to these meetings, then the people gonna think that, hey, you know what, Gulf County's not interested at all, I haven't seen them at one of these meetings, I haven't seen them sitting down at the table proving their point why Gulf County should be getting these dollars. So, it's, it's, it's imperative that we do go to some of these meetings, because we gotta have a seat at the table, if we don't have a seat at the table, then we won't be getting SCAP. We won't be getting none of these grants that we applying for, because the, the representative gonna say, you know what? Don't waste your time with Gulf County, they won't even come up here and shake our hands, they want you to come sit down at the table, have dinner with us, have lunch with us. So, I, I, I think we do, we need to keep this, uh, cause we got a budget for it. As long as we're not going over what is allotted to each, each commissioner, then I think, I think it's fine, I don't, I, I'm not just wasting money at these meetings, I'm trying to go to those meetings, like I say, to make contacts, so I can get with people that who gonna help us in this county.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Quinn? I did not insinuate any of that.
Right, right.
At being far or against. I insinuated that it's wrong for this board not to be the ones to make the decision and to hand it off to somebody else, and yes, we've got time for somebody to come up here, if they gonna spend twenty or thirty thousand dollars flying to Washington, whatever that may be, and for whatever reason, I've got time to know. I've got time to want to know what they plan to do, and when they come back, I want to hear a little bit more than just saying, well, it's a fruitful trip. I haven't seen the fruit. There again, I'm not saying I'm far or against it, I'm just saying it is wrong for this commission not to be fully acknowledged about this, was you invited, do you already know you were going, you might, you've been here two years. Uh, does Mr. Rogers know that he's headed to this meeting, if he is, or, or Mr. Quinn? Well, I don't, so you know, maybe I'm just an oddball out, I don't know, but I know when you take the, I don't like to. I don't like to use the word power, but when you take the authority away from this commission and just throw it out there like that, it is very reckless, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, uh, I'm not going to that meeting, Mr. Whitfield, but what, I just wish you would get with Mr. Butler, and, and just, you know, if you have questions about these conferences, get with him, discuss it with him.
I didn't know I had a question.
Well, I, I, you know, I'm just, I'm all for, I wanna work with you, Mr. Whitfield, trust me, I do. We just gotta move forward, we, we just, I think we can be a good board, but let's get together and move forward, I mean, let's, let's don't hash out every little, uh, issue we have in, in front of this board. You know, and, and I'm not demeaning what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, but, but, uh, they've been going to the national conference for, I don't know how long, you know, and, and I'm not a big traveler, Bo, you know I don't travel, Bo Patterson, I didn't travel with a city. But Bo does, but these men go to a lot of these conferences, and I used to be the first to tell you, it's a waste of money. But I, the more I see now, you've got to sit at that table to get these grants, to get this money, and I, I believe that a hundred percent.
Again?
Hold on, now he has the floor, go ahead, Commissioner McCrone.
And I wish we would sit down with the staff, and I think, I think we can, and work this out.
Well, we got a workshop coming up.
And if you have any questions, I, I'd be the first.
I, you know, I see three conferences there with NACO, Legislative Conference, uh, National Conference, Committee of Workshops and Board and Directors. You know, how much do we need, is one of them okay, or all three of them okay, that's all I'm saying.
And I agree with you, I'll be the first, I'll be the first to, to tell you, I, I don't know about it, each and one of these conferences.
Exactly, that's all I'm saying, that each member, I have.
And I would, I would be, I would encourage you to sit down, Mr. Butler and Mr. Novak, and sit down and discuss it, what goes on at each one, I, I don't know, you know.
I've had a lot of discussion yesterday.
I understand, I understand, and, you know, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, sir, uh, ladies and gentlemen. We, uh, you know, I, Mr. Whitfield and I grew up together, went to school together, and I don't, I, I'm not sure this is an opinion of mine, maybe I shouldn't say it, but I'm not sure all this is Mr. Whitfield, but we'll leave it right there. We go, they're not coming here, little old county of thirteen thousand walking, we have, uh, when we travel, Senator Rubio is not gonna drive down here, I wish he would, but he's not gonna drive down here to Port St. Joe and say, what do you good people need? As I said in the November twenty, we have to go, we've landed a lot of money, when you can take or spend a dime and land a dollar, that's a good return, we got to be there. We're there, when we walk in these offices, they know Gulf, hey, Gulf County's here. And we've got a lot, uh, probably, uh, Mr. Butler, in the last just short while, now we're going up Washington here to discuss what we're gonna do about this Coburt, we gotta go there, they're not coming here. But all these roads we've got, we've got what, forty-five, fifty million dollars? Now, when you can invest in a, a plane ticket and, uh, you know, a hotel room, and you can land that kind of money, that's just good business, people, it's good business, you got to go, we got to go, the people down on the Cape, they know, they encourage us to go to this, try to help them, and we are. But anyway, uh, we need to move on along here, uh, Commissioner Whitfield, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir, I'm not finished with that.
Well, okay, well, you go ahead, or we can, uh, you want to, uh, people, if y'all want to.
I got a mind of my own.
Hold on. Read the motion, it's, we done got.
Commissioner Whitfield made a motion that each trip to be approved by the board.
I have a second, is the motion? Motion fails for lack of a second. You'll have the floor, sir.
All the discussion I've heard, I have not questioned what good, question has never been about what's good or bad or the results. The question is that this should come before this board, maybe we should just sign it over to somebody. Sign you, and let them vote by proxy for you. Uh, they, they should be able for this board to know where and who is going on these trips and what it costs, and so I'll.
Commissioner Whitfield, the motion failed, so it's, it's moot.
I've heard it abbreviated, or asked for, sir.
All right, it's moot. Okay, anything else? All right. Commissioner Quinn.
Real quick, we got a deal with this page, two forty-five, right?
Yeah, yeah. What you wanna do, you wanna?
Well, he pulled, he, he had it, he pulled it, so we need to, we need to accept it or?
I need a motion, uh, put it back into the consent agenda?
You what? That's a motion.
All right, I need a motion to approve.
So, movement, Chairman.
All right, we got it right over here, Commissioner Quinn, I have a second. I have a second.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, Commissioner McCrone.
What are we, uh, proving here?
You're moving your February date from February twenty-eighth to February twenty-first.
Is that cause of the conference?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, my, my second stand.
All right, second, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passed forward to one, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Quinn.
McCrone, you have it?
Who?
Mr. You have it?
No, no, you didn't have anything.
Yeah, yeah, I got, uh, uh.
Oh, you said you didn't have, okay, go ahead, come on, come on.
I got one, uh, in conversation with, uh, Desiree, uh, I would like for us to, uh, approach them about the Odina landing. Uh, there was some trading there, and see if that's possible, uh, so I need a.
Dr. Fisher, for the board, will make contact with Desiree concerning, uh, getting the Odina boat landed under board control. Okay?
All right. You want to put that in the motion? Just so we can clear it up, all right, give me a motion.
Motion?
All right, second by Commissioner Whitfield, any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience, if not, motion passed five and O, all right, thank you. Now, do you have anything? That's good, Commissioner Quinn, let's go over here, maybe we can get to the public here.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I'll be short and brief, uh, huge thank you to the city, uh, Port St. Joe Fire Department and the Police Department, we also had a power line down now on our Avenue A, and they responded quickly, blocked off that road, and, uh, huge thank you to the, uh, power company for getting out there and getting, getting everything, uh, restored. So, uh, thank you, city, uh, Port St. Joe for, uh, quick response, we, we sure appreciate it. Uh, I got a, a, a issue that continues to come up in my district, um, and I appreciate the, the board and the, uh, for allowing county staff in the past to, uh, help with blighted properties in my, uh, in my, in my community. And I'm once again coming forward to board again to ask for your support. Um, we have, uh, we have several, but at this time, we have three more, uh, houses that are, that are ready to be, to be removed, uh, in my, in my, uh, district. Houses are in bad condition, I saw it to the community, and, um, one has actually also been, been used for some illegal stuff, activity, so it's a hazard to the, uh, to the community. Uh, my, my goal is to try to do the best I can to help, you know, help clean up my district. Not only do I want my county looking good, but I would love to have my district also looking good. Uh, and so when you have houses that are a hazard, uh, standing next to someone's house that, that's nice, you know, it's kind of, it's, it's a, it's a hazard, and it makes the, makes the community, you know, kind of make your community look, look bad. And, and, uh, I hope my goal is to try to help do the best I can to, to make my district look good and help my community, you know, get my community redeveloped. Had a cha-chance to meet with Mr. Jim Anderson, along with some, along with Waste Pro, with the county attorney, and along with the, uh, North Port St. Joe redevelopment group, and Waste Pro has come back to us and told us that the, they would drop the, uh, ton, tonnage fee down to, uh, forty-five dollars. Um, so my, so I want to make a motion to allow county staff to work along with the city to get these blighted properties, uh, removed, it's, it's gonna cost us the labor of our guys and the machines, um, from my understanding, the city is, is, is gonna work on the, uh, on the other, on, on the bill part, or either, uh, or leaning the properties. Uh, so the commission, I mean, the, uh, the attorney has the addresses of the properties, um, so my motion is to, uh, allow the county staff to work along with the city to get these blighted properties removed, uh, in my district.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Quinn, second by Commissioner McCrone, any other board discussion? We have done this this past, anyone in the audience? Any opposition? Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see you, Mr. Mayor, come on up, good morning to you. Oh, you know better than that, you know better than that. There you go, come on, come on.
I just want to reiterate what Commissioner Quinn has said about, I think we actually might have four.
I think, well, I didn't bring up the fourth one, because I've been, I, I make sure, one-on-one sixty-one, Robbins Avenue, I've been had that, we've been got approval on that one, probably about five, six months ago.
Okay, and, 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 you know, I heard what he said about talking with Waste Pro and all, but forty-five dollars is, is, is not realistic to the city, we need something better. You know, we want to tear these houses down, get them out of this area, they're blighted, they need to be tore down, like you said, some of them been used for illegal drug activities and things, and, and we want to do all we can, but we gonna have to have a little help on that forty-five dollars. Uh, you know, I spoke with you one time about some things that you had mentioned y'all might be able to do, and, uh, I don't know if Mr. Jim Anderson has contacted you or not, but I've told him about ten times to contact you.
Who?
So, that's ten times he didn't listen to me.
I deal with you, Mr. Mayor.
So, uh, but, but, you know, we do need help, we want to get these houses down, but we, the city just can't afford the forty-five dollars a ton. Uh, it's, you know, we pay fifty-one, so they're dropping it six dollars for us, but, uh, I think with all the business we give Waste Pro and all the headaches we have from time to time, when they're missing stops and things like that, and we don't ever find them for doing that, we need to start finding them some money, if you ask me, they're not gonna live up to their contract obligations. But, uh, I just want to reiterate that, that we need the help from the county, all we can get, and we're willing to do whatever we can do to, to make this a reality, to get these houses tore down.
Good, I'm, I'm one hundred percent supportive of you, let, uh, let us, uh, contact, I understand Norm is back with Waste Pro, is that correct? Is Norm back now? Heard, have you got anything official? Lloyd's not, okay, let us, uh, Mr. Mayor, if you would, and Commissioner Quinn, let our staff, uh, see if we can get down to some hard rock with him, and, uh, I'd like the number zero, but I don't know if we can get it there, but if we could get it half, uh.
The county used to do that for us.
I know it, but see, we don't have a landfill anymore, so, but anyway, let, let, let our staff go to work on this, and we want to help you over there.
Sounds great, I just want to let you know, we, we're ready to tear them down, we just don't have enough money to get them all off.
We got the equipment, people right here, thank you, Mr. Mayor, have a great day. Uh, Mr. Quinn, you still have the floor?
Yes, sir, I, I'd like to get, uh, I don't know if I can get Mr. Mr. Butler to contact Waste Pro, we also want to find out about our amnesty day, uh, find out if they still, if they still.
You got a motion on the floor? Okay, all right.
Sorry.
What was the motion? Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that, Ms. Lea.
Much going on, okay, you got the motion?
Yes.
Uh, for us to proceed with the county to help, I have a second on it, I did get a second, Mr. McCrone, right up here, digging through my notes, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience, assistance to the city here, any opposition, motion passed five and O. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, uh, if I can, I just wanted to give you, uh, Leanna, I know Mr. Quinn, but we've got, it is Three Hundred Avenue C, one sixty-one Robbins Ave, one seventy-nine Avenue B, and one oh one MLK Boulevard, one of them was previously approved, and those are the three addresses for the record, thanks, Leanna, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Quinn?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, Mr. Butler, if you don't mind checking out Waste Pro about amnesty day, uh, something that was brought to my attention, they asked, they wanted to know when, when will they, they hold, so, so Lee's schedule? Lea has it?
Yes, sir, um, due to Mr. Norm being out, um, I'll make contact with them again, the last time I discussed this with them, we do an annual day in conjunction with Public Works, and they normally do this the, um, beginning of April, I believe, I can get an exact date and bring back to the board members.
Okay, appreciate that, and, uh, last, Mr. Mr. Chairman, uh, huge thank you for, to the Pacers Foundation, they're also in the audience, they got some good news to share with the people, so, uh, we can't wait to, uh, hear that good news, I had a chance to talk with Mr. Mark, uh, yesterday evening, and, uh, he shared some good things with me, and I can, I can't wait for him to, uh, get a chance to get to the mic and let the people know what's going on.
Good deal. Wait, wait, just, uh, they're on the.
Okay, okay, we gonna get to you in a second.
We'll get to you in just a moment, sir. All right, Commissioner Quinn?
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Rogers?
Yes, sir, I got one thing, uh, Road Twenty in my district has one bridge on it, and I looked at it, I got with Mark and Lee, and they went and looked at it, uh, we're going to have to do something with that bridge, uh, they've got the price for some Coburt pipe, uh, it's, uh, thirty-six hundred dollars in that neighborhood, we'll be able to do the work. If we go to try to redo the bridge, uh, we will have to get DOT involved, and we don't want to do that, it would cost us lots and lots of money to get it to their standards, uh, what I need is make a motion for, uh, or to approve the, for them to carry on and, uh, fix that bridge, they gonna have to close the road, uh, when the work starts, uh, but, I need a motion, I mean, I need a board approval to tear the bridge out and put the pipe in.
Okay, there we go. All right, gentlemen.
I'll second that.
Got a second by Commissioner McCrone, any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition? Motion passed five and O, Mr. Castron, y'all take care of that, would you please?
I just want to thank them for, uh, the work they did on that, you know, when I found the problem, there had been a accident there, uh, I looked at it, got them to look at it, and, um, come back and said, look, we got to fix this, I appreciate their work, that's all.
Thanks, sir, and sake of time, the chair has nothing this morning. At this time, uh, Mr. Larry, you ready to address this, or you want me to bounce it down here to number eleven or twelve, what do you want me to do?
We can go ahead and do it right now.
All right, it's not gonna take but a minute, good people, just bear with us here, we'll get through this. All right, we through, Mr. Larry, you got the floor?
Yes, sir, if, if you'll go ahead and go into public hearing on this.
Okay, all right, this time we're gonna open up to public hearing, it's on quasi judicial hearing and review.
Yes, sir, I'll go ahead and read you, we had, uh, four members, uh, there at our planning board yesterday, uh, typically have five, uh, as Mr. Rogers has fell off due to his commission seat. You voted, uh, in your consent to add a member, so Mr. Langston will come on board next month.
Good.
Um, we have, we have a minor subdivision, preliminary plat approval, uh, Preserve at the Cape LLC Parcel ID zero six two six eight dash zero eight seven R, located in section seven, township four, south range eleven west, range eleven, off, located off of Cape San Blast Road, uh, State Road Thirty-E, a subdivision consisting of twelve residential units over four point three, four acres. Uh, your planning board yesterday voted by two oh vote with two abstentions to approve this preliminary plat, uh, approval for a minor subdivision. Uh, there was a complete application there and, uh, as submitted, and the concerns were, uh, one of the main concerns was, were they gonna have all state, uh, permitting done, and, and in that case, it will be done at final, believe that final, but, uh, if you have any questions, uh, I would, I would move forward with going to the public and seeing if you have any objection with, um, with quasi judicial hearing.
All right, this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going, going out to you to the public, this is a hearing, does anyone in the public have any objections forward waiving the quasi judicial hearing? All right, having none, this time, is there a representative present?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you can, in addition to the public, both the application and the board, so we'll have three waivers, if the board or the applicant also waive it, we can go and simply into a public hearing, if you would, poll the board.
On the board? Anything? If none, we'll proceed, Mr. husband, you are the representative.
Yes, sir. Uh, my name is Lloyd Jack Husband the third. I represent the Preserve at the Cape LLC for the Preserve at the Cape subdivision along Cape San Blas Road in Gulf County, Florida. Um, and echoing what Mr. Lowry said, the parcel number zero six two six eight dash zero eight seven R, the parcel lies just north of the Seagrass subdivision. Um, it's four point three, four acres, and that's measured from their erosion control line, not the actual mean high water line, which is per the county rule. To meet our density of, uh, twelve units is what we're asking for, and the allowable density is thirteen point zero two units, so we fall under that density. Um, it is the intent of the developer to, uh, create the roads and have them a public route of way, uh, and dedicate those to the county. Um, so they will be brought to county standards and designed as such. Um, I also want to note that if there's any, um, it, I'm sorry, it is our intent to adhere to all local, state, and federal requirements.
Yeah. What's your recommendation there? What's your recommendation? Larry?
Yes, sir. I, I recommend that as well as the board to, to move forward with approving. This is simply preliminary plat. Uh, they will bring final plat approval to you.
Before the board. All right.
Absolutely.
I have a motion to move forward.
Mr. Chairman? If we can get Mr. Husband just to acknowledge on the record, you waived the quasi for the third component of...
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I can, I can read you the, uh, preliminary plat approval. It was the recommendations of the planning board. Uh, Mr. Lowry has it signed by the planning board for you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and the recommendations include that the today's hearing was properly noticed, that there was a waiver of quasi judicial, that the planning board deemed it, and the planner, the substantial completeness of the, uh, plat application, um, and other procedural steps required in your LDR. The form is prepared for your signature, um, and it's the full recommendation of planning board, uh, to entertain a motion of the commission.
All right. I need a motion. Motion? Thank you, Commissioner Rogers.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, this is basically a development order that we're...
It, it, it's actually, uh, it's, it's the first step towards a development order. Um, they're gonna come back with a final, when they meet the final elements and requirements, there'll be another hearing, and they'll come back to you all at that time asking for final plat approval, and at that time, they'll get the conditions of a development order. So there's an additional step under your LDRs. This is the first three steps under section four of your LDRs.
The, the roads, uh, were not, roads were mentioned about, you know...
Yeah, they were brought up yesterday morning, and Mr. Husband can speak to this.
Now, we want to bring those to state standards, or...
Yes, sir. They'll be to the, to the county minimum requirements, where the county engineer has to review and sign off on everything before the county takes a hold. And the preliminary plat, too, is just a density check, and we have thirteen point zero two units per our acreage allowable, and we're only requesting twelve.
Second stand. Good. Thank you, sir. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition? Move forward on this. Motion passed five and oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, husband. Okay. Thank you.
All I have, sir.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna move, hopefully move along here. Uh, at this time, we have Ms. Peggy Osborne, who has to come before the board. Ms. Osborne, come on up, dear.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Um, I have some packets.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, new members.
Thank you, ma'am. You have the floor.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we look forward to working with you. Uh, we'd like to respectfully ask the board to please consider removing Settlers Ridge Road from the whole list and approving the road paving as planned. The road becomes very muddy, and it's, um, really a mess each time it rains, making ingress and egress very difficult. When traveling through slippery, dangerous road conditions, vehicle safety becomes a significant issue. There is a significant safety issue in the event of emergency services trying to get out there. There is a significant safety issue for children crossing three eighty-six to get on the school bus when they could be picked up at their driveway. County maintenance must come and grade the road after each rain, which incurs a significant cost to the county and therefore the taxpayers. If the road were paved, the ongoing cost would cease, and the cost of road paving would eventually pay for itself through the savings in grading and other related costs. Property values are decreased due to the road conditions. The road conditions cause significant wear and tear and increase in vehicle maintenance. In windy conditions, when the roads dry, the dust is horrendous. And because of the nature of the road, the drivers tend to drive on the Fowler's property and on our property so that they don't have to go down the middle of the road. So as you can see, the road paving benefits everyone, and we look forward to a positive resolution of this, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne, for a great, um, presentation there. Uh, Mr. Attorney, let me direct to you, please. Uh, this is a continuation. We tabled this for the board members to have an opportunity to look. We didn't vote to take it off. Is it, do we have to have a vote to move forward, or has it already been made by the prior board to do the... Give, give me the legal aspect of this.
And I, and I went over Ms. Lea's minutes as well. Um, you, you voted at the last meeting to give the staff and the commission the ability to review the issue, um, and I believe, hopefully the commissioners have, the staff has as well. The vote, as it stands, is to pave that road. It's on your paving list. Um, there was folks that came to the podium at the last meeting and said they hadn't received notice, but we assured them that we'd put it on the next agenda, which it is, um, so that anybody else wants to come and offer, give the commissioners an opportunity to examine that road and make any kind of determination. It currently is on the list to be paved, so unless you all make a decision contrary to that, that is the direction. Um, you just held off on it at the time to give the new commission the opportunity to review it.
Any opposition? Uh, we're not in motions already there. Mr. Butler, let's move forward.
Will we make contact with the contractor till they proceed?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Item number eight. Mr. Dumas, sir, you can come up now. I think this involves over Commissioner Quinn. This is over in your district, isn't it? All right, come on up, people. Oh, man, we got the whole entourage with us. There you go. There you go. Oh, man, 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 man. Here we go. Here we go.
Hey, Mr. Dumas. Good. How about you?
Nice to see you moving up in the different branches of the government.
There we go.
Yeah, we got the, I know it's been a long meeting. It's your, it's your pleasure.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna try to keep all of ours in under ten minutes. Why don't we sort of, that way we'll get to it.
I'll let you have, it's your time.
Commissioner, would you ask all the representatives to give their name, please?
Yes, I'll start. I'm Mark Dumas, president of the Pacers Foundation, and I've brought with me representatives of both the management company, Royal American Management, and the construction company, Royal American Construction from Panama City. Wendy?
I'm Wendy Lemans. I'm the VP of Compliance and Resident Relations for Royal American Management.
I'm Beth Mixon. I am the regional manager for Royal American Management, uh, for this area.
And I'm Alan Peruca, the project manager for Gateway Apartments.
Thanks, Alan.
All right, sir. Okay, Mark?
Thank you, sir. Well, it's nice to see you again, Commissioner. Uh, I see there have been some changes. We've been working on this for two years.
Yeah.
And, uh, for some of the new commissioners, I hope this is gonna be very informative. Uh, Mr. Quinn has been very helpful over the last several months, and we're just real pleased to give you an update today. Uh, I know that our apartments, you can see them coming out of the ground. I just gave everyone an aerial view. That was taken about two to three weeks ago. So the good news is that we made it through the wet season and made it through all the dirt. Uh, we knew there was a lot of wetlands in there and some soils that might be troublesome, but the good news is that there was none. And as a result, we're now going vertical. The slabs are in. At this point, there's really no impediment to construction. I'll let Alan speak to that here briefly, but, uh, they're getting ready to put the roof on, uh, one building next week. It'll be dried in. So we're real pleased with that. Um, I'd like, of course, to thank the commission. Some of you that are new, probably followed it, um, but this project would not have been possible without the cooperation of this commission, the county, and the city, um, both of whom had contributed significantly to this project. The total cost of this project, again, for everyone's information, is over eight million dollars. That's a tremendous investment that our company is making in the community, and we're on the hook to Tallahassee for many years for that. Uh, it's got a, uh, fifteen-year commitment to Tallahassee to behave in a certain manner and make sure that everything's run well and taken good care of, and they come out and audit it once a year. And they send somebody down from Tallahassee to check it over and make sure everything's going right. So that's just a brief summary of where we stand. I'm gonna ask Alan now to step up and talk a little bit about construction, and y'all can ask questions as we go along, or wait till the end, however you prefer, Commissioner. Alan?
Come on, Alan.
Well, I think the best thing to do is see if you guys have any questions about the project in general. Um, I'm assuming everybody's made a, a drive-by and seen what Mark had said. We, we, we started in, I want to say it was mid-October, and we made good progress, and, and we did find a little bit of unsuitable soil on the job site, but it wasn't, to an extent, it was gonna prevent anybody from moving forward. Uh, I mean, the, the job right now is a little bit ahead of schedule, just a little bit, but it's scheduled for a, uh, I want to say a mid-July completion. And, uh, up to this point, I know you guys, uh, and the previous commission members had a, you know, it was, it was very important to try and source local contractors. That's, it was very, very difficult, but we were able to get somewhere in the neighborhood of, in material and subcontractor, uh, work, around six hundred thousand, uh, here locally spent, so...
All right, sir.
We felt, felt that that was, uh, it was, it was a challenge, and we actually paid a little bit more in some, some cases. But, uh, in the, in the end, it was to the benefit of the community. Any questions?
You're with Royal American, is that correct?
Yes. The construction side.
I know you are. I would encourage you, please consider local people.
Oh, we have, um...
Please do that.
We've got a master bidders list that we go by, and the one, the one thing that I will say, the people that we've hired have been great. The people that we weren't able to come to agreements with, or they, they just, it, the job was bigger than they, they would have been able to, to manage on their part. It's a very demanding schedule, and it requires a lot of people on the job at one time, which essentially takes a, 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 a company that may have ten guys, it pulls, pulls them away from other jobs that they could be doing.
Right. I am there. Do I have a motion?
Do you have, do you have anything? Wait a minute. Just hold up a minute here. We, we hit our head ourselves. We got, young lady, do you have anything?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. And you have anything?
Just some, just a short.
All right, I'm gonna have to extend your time.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion.
All right. We got a motion over here to extend your time briefly. Do I have a second? All in favor? Uh, before you step down, Commissioner Quinn here, and it, that time, city commissioner, now county commissioner.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Quinn, do you have anything for Alan here?
Uh, no, no, sir. I had a chance to speak with Mark, and, uh, he pretty much updated me on it, everything.
All right. Are you comfortable?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Everything, I, I know you had some questions about the, uh, you know, the rent, uh...
Yeah, uh, well, I think that's gonna come out today also.
Okay, sir. You're satisfied.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're gonna get to all that information. Yeah, yeah.
When it gets time, you just nod there, okay?
Now, that's a construction guy. This is the man in the person.
All right. See you, Alan. Go draw some nails.
These two here, and they gave you some literature there.
Okay.
People have been asking, what does the rent cost? How many units? And what does it take to qualify to get in there? And we've given you that list, but I'm gonna let Wendy here address that for you, and then you fire any questions you got at her.
All right, Ms. Wendy. Let's go.
Okay. Um, I just want to remind everybody that this is affordable housing, but it is not subsidized rents. It's basically for working families and people. Um, rents are determined by HUD every year and income limits, based on some very complicated formula. But, um, right now, just to give you an idea of the rents, um, we have a gross rent that's given to us that we can charge, but then we have to come up with a utility allowance. We have to get approximately what we think utilities will cost, and we have to subtract that, that the tenants will be paying, or residents will be paying for utilities. So we get a net rent, and the most we could charge, and this is what we will be charging, a two-bedroom would be four twenty-five a month, um, up to five seventy-seven. There's just two rent structures for that bedroom. They don't float. It's not based on your income. If you qualify, this is the rent you pay.
On a two, and you said up to five, what?
Seventy-seven.
That is for two also?
Yes. Because we have two different tiers of income limits.
Okay. I, I, I'm with you.
And the three-bedroom would be four ninety-six for, um, the lower, the low, what we call home, and then six sixty-three.
How much?
Six sixty-three.
Okay.
And the four-bedroom would be five fifty-two and seven twenty. So, um, for a four-bedroom, and they're gonna be extremely nice, with a lot of amenities. Um, and we also are big on resident services.[1572.08] and we also are big on resident services. In order to get this money, the home funding, the owner had to agree to provide services for the residents. The services that we're going to provide there is an after-school program for all the kids that live there and also an employment services program where we teach people how to interview, we evaluate their job skills, we can help them with their resume, we can teach them computer skills, there's anything to do with them getting employment or improving their employment status. So those will be the two programs that we absolutely have. And then we have other programs. We go in with a survey. We survey the residents. We see what they're interested in, what kind of programs they want. A lot of times, they do things themselves. They want to give back to the community. Like, we just had one of our apartments, they made 10,000 meals in two hours, all the residents. They could be giving out to people, the elderly and homeless. So we do a lot of things like that to empower residents. And the property is going to be absolutely beautiful. It looks just like any other conventional property. It doesn't look like, you know, affordable housing, so we're excited about it. There's going to be, you know, a lot of amenities, like playground, fitness center. They'll all have washer-dryer hookups. We'll have a gazebo. And the state does monitor every single year. And it's very, our resident selection criteria is very tough. We do credit criminal check and there's all kinds of conditions that you have to meet to move in. So we're very careful about that. We're very careful about our criminal background checks.
Chairman, if I can.
Sure.
Just for everybody's information, does Section 8 or any of that apply to this, Sandy? Or do you know?
Does what?
The Section 8, the supplements that people get?
Now, if a Section 8, like a walking voucher, if someone comes in with a Section 8 voucher, they have to meet the same criteria as anybody else.
But can they use that Section 8 money toward that?
If they will, if Section 8 pays the payment standard, if they pay our rent, yes. If they pay below.
I'm just trying to help question Quinn.
Yeah, if they pay below our rent, then it's up to the owner if it's financially feasible to accept Section 8. But we cannot turn away a Section 8 person just because they're Section 8 and we don't want to.
I was just wondering if they could use that money toward.
Yes. They can, absolutely.
Okay.
Let me give you the income limits. They're based on the area median income. One person is $16,000 is the low and then $19,200. Two peoples, $18,300 and $21,960. I'll just go to the four-person because I'm sure you don't want me to read every single one on here. The four-person would be $22,850 for our lowest income limit and $27,420. That's gross a year. They can't exceed that.
And not.
Right, or they would not be eligible. And we have an application process. Every application comes to the corporate office. A compliance specialist looks at it, reviews the whole thing, makes sure everything is done according to regulations and they're approved from corporate office. So, and we do have a very strict lease and the lease is enforced, so you won't be seeing garbage or, I mean, our properties generally have very, very nice curb appeal. So, and our managers get involved with the community and, you know, we try to give back, not just blend in. And I used to come up here a lot for, I don't know if y'all remember, when JTPA went away and welfare reform and we had the Gulf Coast Workforce Board. I was on that board for six years, so I'm pretty familiar with St. Joe. And we do serve, we have one-on-one, which is a welfare-to-work program. Our Royal American Management actually has been running that program for about 17 years. So we have very good people who can do the employment services training that are available.
All right, thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Any questions from here?
Yes, sir. One, just, just.
Right over here, Commissioner Quinn.
The second program was in employment?
Employment, let me tell you exactly what it's called. It's called Employment Assistance Program. And we evaluate job skills, help them set job goals, and learn how to interview, prepare resumes and things like that. And we've been doing this for a long time. We have put a lot of people to work or in better jobs. So we have a lot of experience with it.
Thank you. Last one. Can I get those income limits one more time? Family of one, $16,000 to?
These are caps.
Sixteen thousand. And the next one's $19,200. That's for one.
Okay.
Two people, $18,300. And I can email you something that goes along to you.
That'd be fun, if you could. That'd be, that'd be great. That's fine.
I'll give you a chart.
In fact, let me say this, Sandy, we should have had a sheet that really clearly made that to you and we will distribute that shortly. It'll be just one sheet and it'll just have the rents, real big letters and real big income. It'll be just one sheet. It'll have everything on it because I know that's of real interest to the community.
Appreciate it.
And I assume your email is probably on your business card you gave me, right?
His.
Okay.
If he has a card, it's probably the same.
If not, Ms. Beth got it. She probably has it.
Okay, so I will email that so everybody will know.
Yes, to his attention.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner, four. All right, one quick question. Anything else, Commissioner?
That's all I got.
I have a quick question for you. Number one, when we get completed and we have a ribbon cutting and the gun shooting and the watermelon meeting and fireworks, where in St. here, where can people go that want to put in an application? Will there be an office here or will there be the city or something? Tell me, how are the people? Because that's going to, that's the question that he's going to get. All right, it's right there. All right, I'll go home and read all of this. Yeah.
We're doing this before. This number is going publicly.
Okay, oh, I know that. But I just want to know, would it be local or are they going to have to go to Atlanta, Georgia or Richmond, Virginia?
As soon as possible. We will either.
Start accepting applications.
Yes, we will either have a Dropbox on the site and if we can't get the clubhouse soon enough, we look at other options. Sometimes we get something in town that's close by. We rent a temporary office space, but there will be something close by if not on the site.
Of course, Commissioner Quinn will probably be point on this. I know he will. Okay, all right, anything else?
Yes, one other thing I'd like to tell you. Question is, is when is the first door going to open? April 1.
April 1st.
We'll be able to move people inside and they'll be able to fry an egg in their unit.
April.
April 1.
Food day. You're not fooling with me, are you?
I'm not fooling with you.
April 1. All right, all right, we're going to hold you.
Unless Alan's fooling with me.
Oh, now, wait a minute. Don't pass it off on him. Don't pass it on him.
I beg your pardon. He just changed it to July.
July, yeah, I think to say April right around the corner. All right, okay. Thank you, Mark. You have anything else?
He just gave himself a big cushion, didn't he?
Yeah, he certainly did.
July's it, though.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, good people.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've moved, we only have two items left. Let these good people get set down or excuse themselves. Wayne and Susan Wozniak, are you still with us this morning? Sir, ma'am, if you would, please come to the podium. Roadway Wildflower Resolution. There we go. All right, sir. Wayne, she already has it, it's in here, but do you need any more information? You have his, don't you have his information, Lian? Okay, you got what you need. All right, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We just have one item for you today. My name is Wayne Wozniak. I live at 122 White Blossom Trail in St. Joe Beach and I'm a member of the Florida Native Plant Society and we had given you a proposed resolution concerning wildflowers here in Gulf County. And so I'm here today to encourage the passage of this resolution that you have received. This is a resolution that has been passed by a number of counties in the state of Florida and particularly those west of Tallahassee. Almost every county except Gulf County and Bay County has passed this resolution. And the reason they have is because wildflowers are beautiful, enjoyable, can attract guests and benefit commerce, environmental health and public well-being, and because many wildflowers, including the Coryopsus, which is the state wildflower, is already naturally abundant along the Gulf County State and County roadways. And because the presence of native wildflowers is essential to the fitness of the native pollinator species necessary for productive and profitable farms and forests, and because simply back in the early 1500s, Ponce de León named this area La Florida because of, it was a land of flowers and because of the native wildflowers. And because it is desirable and attainable by experience that you can get many more wildflowers simply by reducing the frequency and extent of roadside mowing. So this resolution, if passed, would result in less frequent mowing along road sides. So in summary, then, we would like you to please conserve our native wildflowers on state and county roadways by passing this resolution and instructing county staff in partnership with the Florida Department of Transportation to plan and implement roadside management practices that will increase the visibility and enjoyment of Florida native wildflowers. So thank you very much for your time and consideration of this resolution. If you have any questions, I would direct them to my wife, Susan. She's the horticulturist. She can answer anything about wildflowers.
Any questions, any of the board members? I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have, now into the public, we have two forms here. Michael, are you still here?
Yes, sir.
Thought you, I saw you get up and leave a while ago. I said, oh, my goodness. Come on up. Come on up, my friend.
It's cold in here, I'll tell you that.
Getting cold? Oh, man. Hey, how you been? Have a good holiday?
I'm fine. I want to thank y'all for letting me approach you this morning. My name's Michael Howington. I live on Steeble Drive, which is Mr. Rogers' district. And what brings me here this morning is a traffic sign, a stop sign, three-way stop sign in a residential area where there's, to my knowledge, about 34 licensed drivers. 14 of them are retired, three of them are housewives. That leaves 17 drivers that commute to and from work daily. Now, in my opinion, I don't think this three-way stop sign is required. I'm not going to ask you to take it down, though. That's not why I'm here. I spoke with Mr. Butler and Mr. Novak about this and they told me that there's no rule, regulation, ordinance, nothing that governs what a commissioner can and can't do to a road in his district. If he, I guess if he wanted to close it, he could. What I would like this committee, this board to do is create, I guess you'd call it, an ordinance whereby a commissioner has to follow some kind of rule and I would like to see that you, this rule would be that a study, a qualified, a study by a qualified group on traffic control is done to see if a change in traffic devices, traffic control devices is actually required. That's all I want.
All right, sir. We can, over here, our administrator and our attorney just start some wheels rolling on that.
Thank you very much.
Come back with it if we do. Hey, Michael, thank you for being patient.
Thank you.
You have a good day and a good week. The last person before the public, Pat Hardman. Pat, you still with us?
I'm still with you.
Oh, you're used to this. Okay, come on up, Pat. Oh, I know you had some wind out on the Cape area. I was down yesterday and big-time waves.
I'll tell you. Pat Hardman, President Coastal Community Association. First of all, I want to start, I'd like to brag on y'all just a little bit. I saw that 300-page document and I'm not sure that when you said we passed this consent agenda, that folks out there realized how much financial responsibility came with that. There are huge benefits for the county residents in those things that you passed. And I'd like to say thank you because that doesn't just happen overnight. You're absolutely right. You cannot sit here in this thing and expect that type of money and those types of grants to come in. That took effort on the commissioner's part, the staff. If you think any of these things are easy, folks, what, we're six years into beach restoration. We're three years into the Habitat Conservation Plan. People have been working on that, the volunteers that y'all have, but you need to say thank you to the staff who have made these things come to fruition. And as a city citizen here, I want to say thank you to all of them. So I just wanted to get that out. The abatement at the rocks, boy, if we didn't need it two weeks ago, but now that's already in the works and that's a huge help that'll be out there and county, all over the county. So I just wanted to say thank you. Second thing I wanted to say was we're having a Coastal Community Association meeting this Saturday. We'd like to invite all of you to come. It's very informative. It's at the St. Joe Golf Club from 10:00 to 12:00. On our agenda will be FEMA and the new flood maps. As you know, that we, as a committee, have been working on that. They're going to bring down and do a presentation for us that affects everybody in the county. There's some positive, very positive news in effect that some of the ones that were moved out of the X because of our challenge has been moved back into the X and they're looking at some of them that they moved to VE will be possibly moved back to AE. So it's a huge insurance issue, building issue and what have you. That will be being done. It's part of a semi-workshop before y'all. And then we will be having update on the Habitat Conservation Plan, update on the Cobra, update on beach restoration. And so a lot of this would bring some of you new commissioners up to date and also let you know what's going on. We'd appreciate you coming. We handle the sunshine problem. Only Mr. Macron can speak at the meeting. The rest of you can't speak.
I've been there, know all about it.
And we handle that in front so the people know that you're, you can go off and talk on the corner with somebody, but you cannot speak at the meeting. And that's, gives you a lot of information. We certainly appreciate if you come. Thank you. Appreciate all of you.
Hey, thank you. Give us that time again.
It's from 10:00 to 12:00 at the St. Joe Bake Off Club and all the community is welcome to come, but we certainly would appreciate your being.
All right. Thank you, Pat. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes, let me just touch on something. You see this agenda? 95 percent, consent agenda, 95% of it is grant applications, it's inventory write-offs, it's, I know I have two, I think, grant applications in here. Commissioner Whitfield has a couple of grant applications. One of the applications takes up 40 pages. So as far as actual business and all, it's very small compared to, and you have to put it, inventory write-offs, a budget, budget amendments. So it all has to be there. But anyway, I want to take time, the ones that are left, and thank you for your patience and thank you for coming out today and have a good week. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Got it right over here, Commissioner Macron? There you go.
Sick.
Motion for meeting adjourned. Thank you.